Any opposition by like signs saying none, public hearing is at a close. Move right into our agenda tonight for the Prattville City Council meeting. First of all, I'd like for you to stand and render a pledge allegiance to our flag and followed by the invocation.
Salute, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me, please? Dear gracious and heavenly Father, Creator of all things, we come to you as humbly as we know how, asking your guidance and direction as we make decisions that affect so many people in our community. Guidance and direct us, keep us kind and considerate of one another, and I pray that you'll bless every family that's represented here, in Jesus' name. Madam Clerk, will you call the row, please?
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Reniger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Row's been called, call being officially to order. The character trait of the month is dependability, keeping my word even if it means unexpected Council members, you should have received copies of the minutes for the public hearing and city council meetings of September the 20th, 2011. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Argo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller, is there any discussion about the minutes? All those in favor of the approval of minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? I see none, the minutes are approved. This time, we'll open the floor up for comments from the general public on any item that is on our agenda tonight. If you would like to address the council on any of the agenda items for tonight's agenda, please raise your hand, you'll be recognized. Yes, sir, please come to the front, identify yourself by name and address, and state your business, please, sir.
General, my name is J.B. Burt, I'm pastor of New Vision Baptist Church in Prattville, Alabama. I live here in Prattville, and what I want to speak to you about very quickly is that I have a member of my congregation that's the owner of Wonder World here in Prattville, and they were unaware that right next door to them, that there had been a beer license that had been approved. There's not only their establishment, this cafe that wants to have the beer license, but there's also a church that's in the exact same.
Sir, I'll have to interrupt you. Public comment at this time is only pertaining to agenda items on tonight's agenda, that's not on tonight's agenda. We will have a time at the end of the agenda to address other things.
Okay, I was told this was a time to bring this up.
Councilman Bowles?
I would like to ask to hear him out on this real quick, if you don't mind.
Are you asking for an exception to the row?
I'm asking for an exception to the row.
Chair will grant. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. As I said, Debbie Brooks is her name, she had entered in with this particular business with Joe Simbor, who for a long time worked here in our town, had been a member of our church and worked with our young people an awful lot, it'd always been a dream to him to have some type of a facility in our community that children could come, just have a nice, clean, fun time, and he had put this thing together, a lot of hard work. Unfortunately, this last summer, he passed away. Debbie's been trying to work very hard to keep this thing going, and she's very much afraid that having an establishment right next door to her, that selling alcohol could literally cause her business to fall apart. Parents thinking about their children being there, alcohol being sold next door. And so, I'm not real familiar with coming down and speaking against these types of things, I've done it before, but it's not a regular thing that I do. I'm aware that there are people here in our town that are trying to do all they can do in our economy to try to build their businesses, but my fear is, is just right next door, is there any way that we could just not have alcohol everywhere in our city? Is there no way of saying that maybe right next to a church, right next to a family fund center where there's going to be children, is there any way that we could possibly stop that? And so, my request to the city council tonight is to please not allow that to take place. Now, thank you for your time.
Just a minute. Is there any questions from the council? Thank you, sir. Any other items that need pertaining to the agenda now, that you would like to discuss with the council? If so, please raise your hand. Anyone at all? Okay, we will move on to the mayor's report. Mayor, do you have a report for us tonight?
Tonight, first thing I want to talk about is Resolution Two, which is asking the council to go ahead and approve the expenditures of $7,500 so that we can have an assessment done of our IT department. It's been brought to my attention that approximately $200,000 in savings or more could be found in that department through this assessment. Also, we need to know exactly what equipment that we have in there, what age of the equipment. Recently, we have had some failures, equipment failures in that department, and it's cost the city approximately somewhere around $20,000 to get our systems back up and running, so I would ask that the council move forward on that tonight. It is in my 2012 budget, but since we own an emergency spending resolution on that, I would ask that we move forward on that. It's been also brought to my attention that roughly 4% of that IT budget is, anyway, 4% of the IT budget is from the 2012 budget, and most cities have roughly about a 2% IT budget out of their general fund there. But if we can move forward on that, we can potentially save quite a bit in that department. Also, Resolution Number Three is something else that also had in the 2012 budget. It's a software program that will allow our HR department to go to a paperless direct deposit program, which will also benefit our finance department because, piggybacking off of that same software, it can help us with business licenses online, which will improve the efficiency of the IT department, also cut down on costs. It's been estimated that we could save approximately $1,000 a year in postage through this software program. It's also been estimated that we'll save, anyway, in the $1,000 a year just for the postage out of the finance department, doesn't count the personnel time to run these business licenses and so forth. The $4,800 could be saved out of HR, and I have a little more information on that if you look on page 10 of your budget notebook that I presented several weeks back, it has that broken down, but that's also in the 2012 budget on that. But that's the items that are before you tonight, so if you see fit, please move forward with that, because we definitely can find some savings in that area, and we also need to be able to plan forward for the future for our IT department. A little bit of good news about our September tax revenue, we collected $1,766,067.33 with the rebate taken out, it came out to $1,698,312.85, which, that comes out to be an increase of 3.86% without the one penny sales tax. With the one penny sales tax, it was a 37.88% increase from a year ago. Total, this year, we have actually seen an increase of 1.82% from the prior year without that one penny sales tax. Okay, as we move on along with some more of the reports that I have here, recently, EMA received some grants, Homeland Security, and through those grants, they were able to purchase some message board or radar signs, and they have turned those over to the City of Prattville to help us control some of our streets, which these message boards, if we happen to, if there's some kind of flooding or anything else around the city where we need to redirect traffic, that can be utilized there. But one of the things that really caught my eyes on this particular message board, radar signs, is it actually has a memory in it, so whereas it might not even be turned on, where it flashes up saying, you know, you're going 20 or 30 or 40 miles an hour, but it actually records all of those, and so we can go back in history and look and see exactly what the traffic pattern has been on that particular street of the particular day. And so, to me, I think that'd be very useful, so that way, as we compile information, we'll know what kind of patrolling we need to be doing in that area. But I look forward, and that's, like I say, EMA has been working on a grant from Homeland Security on that, and so even though they filed for it, they worked it, we're the recipient of the gift on that, so I want to thank EMA on that. I'm certain everybody's noticed us standing and sitting up here with our pink shirts on, it's for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, our pink, this Friday, we're going to be turning our fountain pink, and so I hope everybody can be there at 7:00. I tried to get everybody, tried to get Kelly Cook to set it for 6:00, but she just wouldn't do that. I don't think she likes to get up that early in the morning, but coffee's going to be provided, and seriously, I hope everybody can show up. If there's anything like this morning, when I was out at wastewater department this morning at 5:30, it was a nice, cool, brisk morning, and it felt really well, and I enjoyed seeing the sun come up this morning. But anyway, the pink shirts that we have on tonight are available from our fire department, they're $12 each, proceeds go to the joy to life, and I want to thank them for stepping forward and having these printed up, and actually, you guys look pretty good with them on. I'm waiting for somebody to compliment me on mine, but that's okay, you can tell me later.
It ain't gonna happen?
That's okay. Well, we'll discuss that later. Do you need a traffic light anywhere? Never mind. October 28th is our candy walk, as we annually had it, and one little thing that we're going to be able to have a little twist on this year is that we plan on having a movie after the candy walk, directly behind City Hall here. Kelly Cook's been able to pull together with PDU Prattville Downtown Unlimited, and the movie is, at this point in time, it looks like it's pretty much going to be no additional expense to the city. We're working with private citizen, PDU, and anyway, pulling it all together, and I guess I better get permission to name the title. Anyway, it's going to be Casper. So anyway, if everybody can come out, our businesses downtown usually have a very good turnout for that, it's a very good, very good thing for the city and downtown, and so I hope to see the council members here, if you can make it, especially the ones who have the youngsters or the granddaughters or grandsons, so please, please make it if you can. Also, this month is our Domestic Violence Prevention Month, so it's something that we turned, we had a little turnout down at the fountain the other day, and it's, you know, this month, we're very, very much an awareness month, so if everybody can keep those items in mind. We also are having our International Walk to School Day, that's tomorrow, 7:30, and so if you see a lot of our youngsters out there, trying to get a little bit on the healthy side, and so we have a good turnout for that. It's the first annual on that, if I'm not mistaken, and look forward to that. I know I'll be walking to school with some of the youngsters tomorrow, so if you have time, turn out about 7:30, and you'll see quite a few of them out there. Other thing I want to bring everybody's attention is about another annual event that we have, our Spinner's Pumpkin Patch, October 22nd to 23rd, that's usually been a pretty good event on that, and so hopefully, I'll be seeing everybody at Spinner's Park, that's been just a mainstay for the City of Prattville, because they usually have a fun run, and that is something also that, in the near future, we need to, public safety, we need to discuss a little bit about all of our fun runs that we have, and because of the overtime that it does create out of our police department, we do need to meet as soon as possible on that, so we can work out some kind of game plan, especially with the emergency resolution that we're operating up underneath, if you guys can move forward with that also. The other event I need to go ahead and talk about also is our county fair, you know, you guys passed a resolution on that last council meeting, and that seems to always be a very good event for this area. One other thing that's been brought to my attention, on October 18th at 3:30 at the auditorium at the Capitol Building in Montgomery, there's been a push to split the City of Prattville from District 88, from our representative. The city lines go all the way to the interstate, as everybody's aware of. Our county line, Otoga County, stops somewhere around Larry Puckett and our hardware building out there, and from there, it goes to the interstate as Elmore County. So if, we need a good turnout there on October 18th at 3:30 at the Capitol Building, because we definitely need to keep the City of Prattville under District 88, so that way, we have one representative and not two. And so, anybody that you guys can get in contact with to make phone calls, but be, I think, most important, that we show up and show support to keep District 88, District 88 in all, in Prattville, not completely District 88. As I move further along, the last week and this week, we've had quite a few different items going on around the City of Prattville, and one thing I'll have to say, I've been seeing more and more of the city employees pulling together, different departments, and I'm not going to single out one particular department over another one, because there, again, I might just forget one, but they have, they have been really pulling together, just, it's been amazing to me sometimes, and I'm just proud that I live in the City of Prattville, and I want to thank our employees while I'm up here for them pulling together and helping us weather this storm that, you know, this whole global economy is facing right now, but I think that we're very fortunate to be here in the City of Prattville. The tax increases I just spoke about, I'm certain there's numerous cities wish that they could stand on a Tuesday night, or whenever they have their council meeting nights, and be able to boast that they have an increase in their sales tax, which I think it shows that, that we're going to weather this economic storm a lot better than any other communities, and I want to thank the employees, the citizens, and the six, seven of you guys for all of us working together. I know from time to time, we bump heads, and I think we eventually shake hands and are pulling together as a family, so I do want to thank you guys for everything that you have done there. And talking about a family member, Jamie Moncrief has been a family member with the City of Prattville for numerous years now, and she's going to be leaving us. I've sent an email to each and every one of you guys Monday, and she will definitely be missed. She's been a mainstay around here, and if you've ever been a little on the downside, if you ever get around Jamie, she usually picks you up in a very big hurry there, so I know I'll be missing her, and probably you guys will too, especially if I have to start answering the phone in there, and whenever you guys call, it might not be pretty, but anyway, if we could, I'd like to have Jamie stand up, and I'm going to thank you for everything that you've done, and been able to teach me for the last eight or nine months or so, and as being the mayor, and then also the seven or eight years that I've been here as city council, and not to mention you, all the years that my family and I have known you, and I look, I know you'll have a bright future, and look forward to seeing you around, but thank you for everything that you've done.
Thanks.
Anyway, in closing, like I said, I was out at wastewater at 5:30 this morning, I will probably be at another department early in the morning, too. I'll be glad to inform you guys of which department I am, where I'll be at in the morning, if you'd like for me to call you early in the morning, 6:00, 5:30? Any takers besides District 6? Wouldn't be the first time.
Any questions for the mayor, from any of the council members? Councilman Miller?
Could you give us a brief update on how the city is, I guess, responding to the new immigration law, and given that, you know, on the 28th, the judge did not continue injunction for most parts, especially licenses and permits and things of that nature?
Well, you don't mind putting somebody on the spot, do you?
I mean, I wouldn't, I didn't know if the league had sort of given some guidance, because all cities are facing this, or if we were in the early stages of, because...
I did talk with Chief Huggins just the other day about it, and basically, you know, we're following what we're supposed to be doing, if there's an offense that's happening, whether it's speeding, some kind of traffic, illegal traffic maneuver, anyway, if there's a legitimate reason to pull a car over, and there's a legitimate reason to ask for documentation, then that's the procedure that we're following.
And I guess I would just encourage you, and I guess our attorney, to look into perhaps what the league is doing in terms of guidance, and again, I wasn't even in the public safety arena as much as the permitting and licensing arena, so, because there's some requirements, you know, on that perspective as well, so, and I knew you were working on that, I just hadn't had an update recently.
Sorry about that, my phone was ringing. So, anyway, yes, sir, we will, we'll take a closer look at that, and I will say that over the last several months, City of Prattville has utilized the league municipalities, I think we've gotten our money's worth this year, this last six to eight months or so, so I'll get Chief to check up on that, or I'll check up on that and let you guys know.
Any other questions of the mayor, from the council? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into special committee reports from the city council members. Councilman Striplin, do you have a report?
No.
Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Argo?
No.
Really?
Really.
Councilman Miller?
No.
Councilman Bowles?
No, sir.
Mercy. Okay. Well, I will report on the finance committee. We had a meeting, and we took everyone's suggestions and concerns and comments pertaining to the proposed budget, and we're trying to incorporate as many ideas as we can into a revised budget that we hope to have before the city council, no later than the second meeting in November. If time allows, we may have something before you by next meeting, but I'm not promising anything, it kind of depends on when we can work out a work session and a couple more finance committee meetings, but we are moving forward and hope that you'll like what we have to offer. That being said, we'll move into the agenda. The first agenda item is a resolution to declare various wooded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975 is amended. Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground...
Councilman Miller?
Yes, sir.
You can just introduce the resolution, read the addresses, and that'll be sufficient if you like, or you can read the whole resolution, whatever you prefer.
Okay, I prefer the first. To declare various wooded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975 as amended. 567 Ashton Oak Drive, 1210 Conestoga Wagon Trail, 725 East Main Street, parentheses, Old Wachovia Bank, closed parentheses, 109 Isom Street, 111 Isom Street, 312 Marlet Drive, 525 Mount Erie Drive, 403 New Moon, 415 New Moon, 1594 Rolling Hills Drive, 116 Scenic Drive, 1601 South Memorial Drive, parentheses, old gas station, vacant lot at southwest corner of Scott Lane and Poplar Street, 1244 Wright Street. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors listed in attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the city council following their removal. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Miller has moved Resolution Number One. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin, are there any comments or questions pertaining to this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is approved. I have number two, is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with BWS Technologies for an IT study for fiscal year 2012 at a cost of $7,500. Councilman Striplin, will you please introduce this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas BWS Technologies is currently providing information technology services to the City of Prattville, and whereas it has been determined that BWS Technologies will best serve in their capacity to provide the city with the necessary expertise in this endeavor, and whereas the City of Prattville desires to continue the information technology service relationship, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with BWS Technologies, and funds in the amount of $7,500 are hereby approved and appropriated to be paid from the information technology professional services line item in the fiscal year 2012 budget. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Striplin has moved this resolution for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo, is there any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is approved. I have number three, is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies to add Tyler Output Processor to the current software package in the amount of $5,813 for the Human Resources and Finance Departments. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Human Resources and Finance Departments have a current agreement with Tyler Technologies in providing payroll software, and whereas funds in an amount not to exceed $5,813 for Tyler Output Processor, software are in the proposed FY 2012 Human Resources Software Interface Line Item, and whereas the Human Resource Department will be able to email direct deposit vouchers to employees as well as business license and renewals, and whereas the Finance Department will be able to email business license and renewals, and whereas this will result in a yearly savings of more than $4,000. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is authorized to enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies in the amount not to exceed $5,813. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Excuse me, this resolution has been moved by Councilman Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles, is there any discussion pertaining to this resolution? Councilman Miller?
Could you remind me that this will do direct deposit for city employee paychecks?
Yes, paycheckless direct deposit is not necessarily as much of direct deposit, paycheckless, and also it would be affecting the Finance Department also.
But on the city employee payroll aspect of it, I think you had answered this before, but I just want to refresh my memory, for employees who might not have a checking or savings account, or have a banking account, they will get a cash card or debit card, or what was the mechanism for those?
HR department has that worked out, and actually... HR department has that worked out, and actually, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we're down to four individuals? Oh, we're good? Okay, we're 100%.
So it's a non-issue?
It's a non-issue, yes, sir. So I want to... That was actually a little new information to me there, and I really thank you, and I thank the employees, because, you know, in this day and time, we're really trying to stretch the penny and save every dime that we can. I wanted, there again, to thank all the employees, because I think we had approximately 100 employees who were not direct deposit, which that takes up paper, the copper machine, wear and tear on it, personnel time. So I do want to thank the employees for stepping up the plate again and helping us out on that.
And, you know, I support this 110%. I would just be mindful that, you know, there's more and more headlines and articles, you know, about banks that are increasing fees on debit cards and checking accounts and a variety of instruments that they have. So, you know, it's not out of the question that an employee might opt, you know, to drop an account like that. And I would just be mindful that that might be something in the future we would need to try to work with to minimize the impact on...
Well, my understanding is that, and I don't remember the year, but a few years ago, several years ago, the policy is that in any new hires, they automatically have a direct deposit. So they're very aware of it, is whenever they come on board, it is a direct deposit.
Right. And again, I would just, I mean, we don't know where this banking fee thing is going to go, so I would just be aware that in the future, that's something we might need to, you know, because we want to be sensitive to those sorts of issues. You know, the last article I read, and it was in the paper just this past week, you know, some folks are starting to carry cash again because they're unloading their debit card, because the Bank of America $5 a month charge, things of that nature. And I don't know where that's going to end, or how far that's going to go, you know. So anyway, I just ask that you be mindful of that and sort of watch.
Will do.
Councilman Argo?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I have two questions. Actually, I should have asked one on the previous resolution, but I'll ask it on this one as well. In this resolution for Tyler Technologies, it does not indicate where the funds will be taken from. I'm assuming that will be from the general fund, since we don't have a budget. And that was going to be my question. On BWS, it says the money will come from professional services line item in our 2012 budget, but we don't have a budget. So, in my opinion, BWS, that money should come from the general fund, as should the Tyler Technologies. But I wanted to get your opinion on that.
That's a point well made. I'll have to admit that that slipped past me on that one. So we probably need to get a little...
Doug.
Little info might be from the city attorney.
Well, I'm sure Doug can answer. Is that not correct? Does this need to come from the general fund until we have a budget?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, so does that mean we need to make an amendment? Or you guys?
Mr. President, I make an amendment on the Tyler Technologies resolution before us on line 31, after the amount of $5,813 to say, and the funds will be appropriated from the general fund.
You've heard Councilman Argo's proposed amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Is there any discussion on this proposed amendment? All those in favor of this amendment signify by raising your right hand. All opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is amended and properly before us. Is there any other discussion on this resolution? The amended resolution, excuse me. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the amended resolution is approved.
Mr. President.
Councilman Argo?
I realize this is out of order, but having voted on the prevailing side on Resolution Number Two, I make a motion that we reconsider Resolution Number Two.
Councilman Argo has moved for reconsideration on Resolution Number Two. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Resolution is now officially before us. Councilman Argo, would you like to introduce an amendment?
Yes, sir. On line 26, after the first word, the delete information technology professional services line item in the fiscal year 2012 budget, and in its place, the general fund.
You've heard the proposed amendment to this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Is there any discussion on this proposed amendment to this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? The amended resolution is approved. Next item is a resolution to reappoint Steve Burton to the library board. Councilman Bowles, will you please introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas a vacancy occurs, currently exists on the library board due to the term expiring of Shirley Laster on June 15, 2011, and whereas it is desired Prattville City Council to fill the vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville of Alabama that Steve Burton is hereby reappointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on June 15, 2012, or unto a successor as duly qualified and appointed. I so move.
Councilman Bowles has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Is there any discussion pertaining to this resolution? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. I'm a little confused. The first lines of the resolution say that a vacancy exists due to the term expiring of Shirley Laster, and then it says we're reappointing Steve Burton. Doesn't Steve currently serve on the board? So he's going to Shirley's term? And then there will be a vacancy because of his... Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of approval of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is approved. Item number five is a resolution to present nominees for the Ettaug County Board of Equalization. Councilman Argo, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas Section 40-3-2, Code of Alabama, 1975, requires that the governing body of the largest municipality in each county shall nominate three persons whose name shall be considered in the selection of a county board of equalization for the next four-year period beginning October 1, 2011, and who shall be residents of Ettaug County, who are each owners of taxable property which is located within Alabama, who are each qualified electors in Ettaug County, and who are, in the opinion of the appointing governing body, competent to serve as members of the county board of equalization. And whereas Alabama Commissioner of Revenue Julie P. McGee has requested that the following three nominees of the City of Prattville be submitted to her office as soon as possible: John Boone, Belinda Edwards, and blank. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that it hereby nominates the aforementioned persons for the state of Alabama's consideration in selecting the Ettaug County members to serve a four-year term on the Ettaug County Board of Equalization beginning October 1, 2011, and ending September 30, 2015. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Argo has moved this resolution for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Is there any discussion pertaining to this resolution?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you. Mayor, we discussed this a while back. Were you not able to get a third name?
No, sir. I think there were a couple of council members who might have wanted to bring one up, but never could close the deal on some of them.
Guess two will suffice.
Any other comments or questions pertaining to this resolution? Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, members of the council, the mayor and I did have a discussion about this particular resolution. I did mention a name of a gentleman who lives in District Three, Dustin Woodley, who is a realtor and who manages several pieces of property in Prattville. I must confess, I have not discussed this with him, but I feel confident that he would be willing to serve. But rather than make a motion to include his name and then have him decline, and we'd be right back, is, I guess, my question would be, is there a way for us to just adopt it with the two names, and then at the next meeting, add a third name?
As you well know, when you vote on the prevailing side, you can always bring back a resolution for reconsideration at the very next official meeting. So yes, the answer. Your question is yes. Settle?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, comments pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Councilman Argo, do you have a piece of business that you would like to bring before the council at this time?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Earlier tonight, during our public comment portion of our meeting, we had Pastor Burke speak to us about a liquor license that this council approved at our last meeting. Since that time, I think each of us have received some additional emails, and therefore, I'm making a motion to reconsider Resolution Book 2011-A, page 19, to grant a restaurant-retail liquor license for George Harvey Russell, owner and doing business as The Cafe Grill. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Argo, having voted on the prevailing side on our last meeting, during our last meeting, when this resolution was first brought forward, is certainly within his rights of bringing this forward as for reconsideration, but he will need a second. Is there a second to this?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Is there any discussion on this resolution as it's brought back before us? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Again, and I do beg the council's indulgence, since we did approve this at our last meeting, when I began to receive emails from individuals who were concerned about this particular license, it actually caught me off guard, because we had adopted it at the prior meeting. Also at that meeting, we actually had a public hearing on this particular license, and no one came forward to speak in opposition to that license. However, since that time, I have visited this location. It is not in my district, so I do beg the council's indulgence. Normally, we're very careful not to get into someone else's district, so I do ask Mr. Bowles and Mr. Wood to please, you know, forgive me for getting into that business. But I've been by there a couple of times. It is one door down from Wonder World. My son has been to Wonder World on a number of occasions, where there have been large birthday parties. I actually went by to talk to Mr. Russell today to let him know what my intentions were, and he was not there. The business was not open, so I'm not even sure what his hours are going to be. But I do ask this council to reconsider this. I voted for this at the last meeting. I regret that vote, and I guess what I'm asking the council to do is to allow us to revote and allow me to change my vote. And I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions pertaining to this? Councilman Miller?
I appreciate those comments, and I too remember the public hearing, and no one spoke against this. So I guess my question for the city staff is, was the same notice and all the usual stuff per protocol carried out? The public notice, I think the newspaper, you know, notice and so on?
There was the big orange public notice sign in the store window for the two-week period, and it ran in the newspaper two consecutive Saturdays.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to this resolution? I have a question of our police chief. My understanding that Mr. Russell, after we passed this in our last meeting, has received his license to sell liquor. Can you verify whether that's true or not? I just heard that today.
No, sir. I can't verify that he has or has not.
Okay.
My position is to do the check prior to.
Okay. Well, sorry to put you on the spot, but I didn't know for sure. I thought perhaps you did.
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. And I would add just one more comment. Since we did adopt this resolution at the last council meeting, and since that time, we have been contacted, at least I have, I'm going to speak for myself, contacted by at least a half a dozen citizens, including a telephone call from a lady in Millbrook who happens to be very good friends with, according to her, she's very good friends with the owner of Wonder World. She actually was pretty ugly to me, asking me to vote against it, as she was being ugly to me. But I would make this comment that, for whatever reason, I do believe that there was some confusion about when this particular item was going to appear before us, since we received emails after it was already adopted. So I would just ask the council to consider that as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand?
I want you to clarify what we voted on. Can you clarify it?
Okay, this resolution has been brought back before us. It is here, is in its original form. If you vote in favor of it, we're reaffirming our vote from the last meeting, granting the retail liquor license. If you vote against it, then you're voting, actually, you're reversing your decision if you voted in favor of it, and you're voting against the recommendation to grant the license.
I don't think... Mr. McDowell, can you step forward, please? Can you clarify that? What he is asking right now, and I don't think that's what he's asking yet.
It's properly before you now, because y'all asked for it to be reconsidered. So it's now here. So now, since it was brought by the prevailing side, so now it's properly before you again, and it's like it was. So I think you vote on it now. But you're... If you vote yes for the liquor license... All right, let me think the... Yeah, please, yeah.
Mr. President, and I guess this is a point of order. I made a motion to reconsider. Mr. Bowles seconded that motion, that we then began to have discussion. We have not technically voted yet to reconsider.
Okay.
It's my, it'd be my position that we have merely got the, my motion is before us, but we have not voted. If we vote in the affirmative to reconsider, then we would then have further discussion and then take a vote to actually reaffirm or to deny.
Do you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Okay. No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that was the point I was looking for.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to reconsider signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Okay. There's a majority to reconsider. The resolution is properly before us. Is there any further discussion about a resolution that's properly before us? Okay, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? It's 3-3. There's not a majority, so this resolution fails, for lack of majority. Any other business to come before the council at this time?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this before we leave here.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
All votes that were in favor, yea votes for, in favor of granting the license, I want to make sure. Is that right? Burke? Can you give me those yea votes again, please? Can you give me those yea votes again, please?
Councilman Wood, Councilman Miller, and Councilman Renninger.
Thank you.
Settle, Councilman Wood. Councilman Miller?
I guess this will be in the minutes, but the approval to reconsider was Miller, Bowles, Renninger, and Argo. Correct.
Any other clarification or comments on Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. My only comment is, I just appreciate the council giving me the opportunity to bring this back, to correct a vote that I regrettably made at the last meeting. I am sorry that Mr. Russell has gone to this effort and may or may not get his license, but I do feel as though that that's the process that this council lives by. We do have that opportunity to ask to be reconsidered when a mistake was obviously made on my part, and so I just thank the council for their indulgence.
Anything else, Councilman Wood?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I want to make sure I'm clear on this because I know this may come up again. Councilman Argo brought it back to us tonight because he had a change of heart, or he did not want to vote in the manner that he did. The last vote on this, can you remember what the vote was?
Don't hold me to it, but I believe it was six-one, six-one or either seven-zero, but I'm not sure.
And I'm asking this question because I want to make sure that I'm clear in my mind with, based on what I'm hearing with this vote, that there's not only his change of heart, but there was some change of hearts of others. I want to make sure that I'm correct on that. So we had a six-one vote or a seven-zero vote at the last?
Yes, sir. I believe it was seven-zero, but I'll be glad to check and send you an email.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further comments? Okay. We're going to close the agenda items, and we'll open the floor up for any comments or questions from the folks that we serve, on any business item that you'd like to bring before the council. Any public comments? Yes, ma'am. Would you come and identify yourself with your name and address at the microphone and state your business, please?
I'm Allison Gray. I live at 1698 Old Country Road. I know most of you pretty well. Haven't seen you in a while, Honorable Mayor Gillespie, Mr. President, members of the council. I have not been very active for about two and a half years. I've been a full-time grandma. But I've realized recently that I need to get involved again because it's my grandson's future that I have to look out for. And I don't know all the politics or everything that's been going on because I've been out of touch with everybody. But I've been hearing rumors, different things going on. I know we had a sales tax increase, and I know it's going to shock you all to know that I think we need to extend that sales tax increase until we get out of this mess for three to five years. Whatever it takes, get out of the mess. And secondly, don't cut public safety under any circumstances. In this day and time, we just cannot afford it. It's just, we just, we have to look out for our families and our children, and cutting public safety is not going to do it. And I don't know where any of you stand, and I don't care. I do, but I don't. I mean, I care, but I don't care. And y'all know how nervous I get when I get up here anyway, but I feel real strongly about this. And I'm one of those people that pays that one cent sales tax increase, and I spend a lot of money in Prattville. So I'm willing to keep doing that. Not forever, but for three to five years, and y'all get us out of this, I'll dance a jig for every one of you. Okay? Thank you.
Any questions?
It's not always about the numbers, okay? There is a human issue, human interest issue in here that you really have to pay attention to, and the safety of our children and our safety is a big deal. And we don't always, we're not always aware that we need our fire department or our police department or our public works department until we need them. And then when we need them, it's like being without electricity for a week. Try that. When you need it, you need it. And we're kind of spoiled here in Otoga County, in Prattville, the preferred community. We like it that way. We want it to stay that way. We want to feel safe. We want the people from Montgomery that come over here to shop because they feel safe over here to keep coming, and that's a big part of it. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Gray? It's great to see you again, and I know that you've been busy being a full-time grandmom. Nothing better than grandchildren. Anyone else like to come before the council to discuss anything with us? Just give us your name and your address. I know who you are, but...
Lonnie Brand, 258 Terry Lane.
Yes, sir.
When you guys were discussing the liquor license thing just a few minutes ago, you weren't asking for any public comments, but now you're asking for public comments on just general stuff? And the thought had occurred to me, as a person that might be interested in having a business, if a city council passes a liquor license, then that person makes financial commitments based on that passage, and then you take it away, you might need to be prepared for the legal issue of that, you know? So it's something that you should be thinking about as far as the legal department. And the other matter that I was primarily going to get up about was, you were saying the finance committee was preparing the revised proposed budget?
Yes, sir.
Will there be a time when the public gets to see that?
Yes.
Before it's actually put up for vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
And you know where I am and how to contact me?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
How are you tonight, sir? Good evening. Carl Hawthorne, 704 Emerald Drive. You know, I tend to agree, I didn't mean to speak about, I didn't come for the previous issue, but I agree with the gentleman that just said, if you have a license and you've got a commitment, I have a problem with that. That's not good business sense. I understand everything, but that just doesn't make sense to me. I don't think that, I don't think that dog hunts. But you'll find out if he decides to sue. That doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. Well, you can go ahead. Now, tell me if I'm wrong, but did he not get approval? Does he not put the notice up about the liquor license? I'm not fully aware of all the procedures, but if you've told him to go ahead and do that, how in the world can you go back and say, well, we changed our mind? I mean, how about, why don't you go back and change somebody else's liquor license? They've had it for three or four years. I mean, where, what's the rule? Is there a rule that you have so much time? I don't know. I'm just, can somebody answer that?
On, yes, sir. I'll attempt to answer it for you.
Okay. Thank you.
By our rules, Robert's Rules of Order, any item, doesn't necessarily have to be your liquor license or anything else, but any item that comes before the council and is voted on and is approved, if any member that votes on the prevailing side, the winning side, wants to bring that item forward at the very next meeting, it has to happen at the very next official meeting, then they can do that with a second and with a, you know, a positive majority vote for reconsideration. Doesn't necessarily have to be an item pertaining to a liquor license, it can be any item.
Okay.
The reason for that, as I understand it, here again by Robert's Rules, is to correct errors and mistakes that might have been made due to human error, or to consider additional information that may have come forward since the original vote was taken.
I understand your explain, and that explanation certainly is sufficient for me. It's not my liquor license, but once you get this notification on liquor license, do you not go out and probably make some financial commitments or et cetera for this? As a businessman, he could have some financial commitments that he's already signed up for and this type of thing, but you're saying that your Robert's Rules allows the city council to come back and basically amend a decision that you made as long as it's the first meeting thereafter, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's probably one of the better answers I've heard.
Thank you.
My topic tonight is the three holidays that we're hearing about and reading about in the newspaper. And, you know, it's interesting to me how all of us here applaud our city employees and do a great job, fantastic job, and since we sit down and cut the budget, what do we cut? We cut the employees. We put the burden of all these cuts on the employees. You know, what hypocrisy. What hypocrisy. I don't know, I don't know how, you know, you can on one hand say one thing like this and applaud everybody. If you really mean it, you would try to not put all the burden on them. So what I'm going to do is ask some questions. And Mayor Gillespie, this article, this is from the Montgomery Advisor, Metro State, and there was one in the, the one in the Progress earlier, but this article states that part of your budget proposal is to trim city paid employees from the current number of 11 to eight. Now, that says that it's in your budget. Is that correct?
The dollar amount that's in the 2012 budget is for the full 11.
For the full 11, the $480,000?
More or less, yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. So this is a misquote?
Well, we have also in the budget notebook presentation that I gave the council, it does have some options for them to consider.
But it wasn't cutting fast. It wasn't, this, okay, you can consider these options, but it wasn't in your AB budget or what?
Correct.
Okay. And it says, "Cutting holidays wouldn't save money, but it would lower the percentage of personnel costs reflected in the overall budget." That isn't stated, that can't be. If you're going to, if it doesn't save money, how can it affect your budget because the budget's related to money?
Well, I think actually what the concept was there was that the previous budgets, prior administration had never budgeted holidays. So if we're going to continue to have any holidays, we had to put the whole amount into the budget, and so you would not see an actual savings from 2011 budget to 2012 budget as far as reducing from 11 to eight. So I mean, it's, you know, it could be taken any kind of way there.
So this isn't a hard and fast rule. These are just things of discussion, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Having said that, then, I'm going to proceed.
Mr. Hawthorne?
Pardon?
I'm anxious to hear everything you say, but four minutes, please, sir.
Four minutes?
Four more minutes.
Well, okay. Councilman Argo and Fank have spoken against the removal of the three holidays, and I support them against that, oh, for that. Councilman Miller, Stripland, and Wood were not quoted in either article, so I don't know their opinions on the issue. Councilman Renninger and Bowles have commented on this issue and seem to support the cuts. Now, Councilman Bowles, I know that if you won't take my time, maybe after my time, you can go ahead and explain. You had a quote in here about taking the percentage from 56 to 50%, and I think that was a misquote, or you were misunderstood on that? I am suggesting the following regarding the elimination of the three holidays. Since January, the number of city employees has been reduced from approximately 350 to approximately 300. That's approximately a 15% cut of personnel during the past nine months. Since the 1% tax has been in place, the city has collected approximately 2.4 million in cut expenses in excess of 1.6 million. This total is nearly 4 million of net income over the 210 budget. The city has balanced its budget, quite frankly, on the backs of its employees. The 1.6 million in cut in expenses is mainly employee cuts and furloughs. The draconian cuts that are being made in this, on the budget, in the process, is not the fault of the employees, it's the fault of past management, past fiscal mismanagement of the city. Since the final budget is not going to be approved until the end of this year or the beginning of next year, I would request that this holiday issue be placed on a backburner until the city is fully aware of all the retirement packages that might be accepted, as well as attrition from the workforce during that time. I understand that the city is looking at other measures that could save significant sums of money in the budget, and I encourage that action. The total cost, can I have one minute? Thank you. The total cost of the 11 holidays is estimated to be $460,000. Eliminating the three holidays would cost approximately $133,000. This $133,000 represents 3/10ths of 1% of the $40 million budget. We read where the city wants to get personnel costs approximately 56% of the total budget. 3/10ths of 1% doesn't even register when comparing it to the total city budget. Where was, and I have other things to say, and what I'm asking is that, let's consider our employees. We're talking $133,000 in total of a $40 million budget. These people have sacrificed through layoffs and furloughs, which have been costly to our employees, and I'm asking for your consideration when this budget is finalized, if you would allow our cities to be in line with other cities in the community which were listed that have the full amount of holidays, and our state employees that have 14 state holidays. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Hawthorne, Mr. Bowles, I'm a Councilman Bowles, excuse me?
I would like to clarify, what I was talking about in the paper is I agree with Councilman President Renninger that we desperately need to get our percentage down to 56%. Most businesses try their best to keep their percentage at 50% employees. Now, I've always been told up here by several councilmen, you can't run government like you run business. That is true on one hand, not true on the other hand, because a business needs to make a profit. Generally, most businesses try to make a profit of 6% to 8%. So we do have a little extra cash that we can spend, which should go towards employees. But unfortunately, we don't make money. We take your money. We take everybody's money. We're not like the feds, we can't print it. We've got to tax it. So yes, we have done a lot to the employees, but at the same time, we have done a lot to our citizens by raising their taxes, sales taxes, increased garbage fees, increased sewage fees, increased tickets. So we are taken from two hands, because that's all we can do as a council, as a city government, is take. Does that make sense? So I really want my budget down to a 56% employees so we can get this thing stabled out, and I believe we can do it without touching the fire department and the police department. There's ways of doing it by, like he was saying, we could look at, and these are the things we're looking at. Look at holidays. Let's look at insurance. Can we get cheaper insurance? Can we get cheaper rates on our workman's comp? Because all of that's part of the employee package. It's not just what the employee takes home, it's the entire package, what that man cost us to working. And so we need to find cheaper ways to work the people to get it to that percentage. And that's what I think we're all doing, we're looking at every possible venue to save as many jobs as possible and keep the city afloat at the same time.
The largest percentage, the large, I'm allowed to reply. The largest percentage, the largest percentage of cuts have come at the cost of our employees. And it looks like every time we want to cut more, it's the employees. Three holidays is all, I'm not asking for the world, I'm asking for three holidays. I'm asking for them to be treated like everybody in our sister cities and communities around here, to have the same holidays. You're taking them from 11 to eight. We have state employees that are getting 14. The state's in as bad a shape, probably as Pratt, well, probably not as bad as Prattville, but it's in pretty bad shape. And... not as bad as Prattville, but it's in pretty bad shape. And they're not getting cutting their holidays. So let's treat our people, if we, if we think they're so great, which we applaud all the time, then darn it, let's treat them right. Let's have no more furloughs. Let's take the budget and extend it as long as we can and get as many people lay off and early retirements. And, and let's, let's treat our people like we really care about them, other than giving them lip service at meetings and applauding them. And I, I mean that. I mean, every time I'm here, we're applauding our employees, and every time I read the paper, I'm reading about how we're trying to cut the employees. I don't think it's right. And I just hope, I came here to request that the three holidays be, not be taken away from them. That, that's all I'm asking. And I don't think that's asking too much for the, our city employees that do such a fine job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Mr. Hawthorne. Anyone else like to address the city council on any matter at this time? I'll give you a second bite at the apple. Come on up, Allison.
I didn't realize that they were cutting the packages of the employees, the insurance and all of that. So what, are we spending money to train police officers and firemen and other people so they can go to other cities that have better packages because we're taking them away? That's, that's not...
I think you might...
That doesn't make sense to me.
You might have missed, what I was saying is that what the council and what I've asked, what I've asked our mayor to do is look at every, everything across the board.
Have y'all taken a cut?
We will be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to address Mrs. Gray?
Thank you again. It's good to see you again. But I do want to reiterate a little bit on, on the insurance. Now, the insurance, it's, it's probably one of the best packages out there. Everything that we have been doing, HR has been doing, has been doing to keep that premier package together for the employees. It's a matter of fact, we're having a employee insurance committee meeting tomorrow, so that way we can discuss it, show them exactly how well that it has been doing. But we are a self-insured health package on that, underwritten by Blue Cross. But we have, the health insurance is, in my opinion, the best out there. And we're looking at ways to make it better. You know, we, we are looking at several different ways. You know, the workman's comp, I have, we're, we're looking very closely at that because it is a workman's comp for the city of Prattville is approximately $500,000. And you know, that is a insurance. So you know, whether that is affected or not, I don't think that that's a, a negative impact to the employees as long as we do have a, a, the insurance, you know, the workman's comp for them. But I truly believe that we do have some of the best employees in, in the state or in the country. We have been through quite a bit over the last nine months to a year or so, and some people could even say longer than that. But the employees are very, very dedicated. I don't think that the vast majority of the employees are actually here for the pay, which I know that they do have to have the pay for their, for their families and so forth. But I, for one, am very aware of the employees, especially since I've taken over the role as mayor, because I'm down here with them day in and day out. I was down at Wastewater this morning at 5:30. And like I said earlier in the day, Wastewater, and I'm sorry, Chief Brown, but Wastewater has a little better coffee than you do. I don't know if it's the water that they put in it, but it's, it was pretty good coffee this morning. And I have been going around to all the different departments and, and really feel that they are out there as a family. And, but I really do appreciate you coming down. We're, we're looking at this, trying to right the ship and, but, but still keep our employees intact and...
Mayor, you got 30 seconds.
And, and I do need to remind you, I am an invited guest, so thank you for coming down.
Any other comments or questions that need to come before the council from the public? Okay, we'll move into our reports. Mayor, do you have a brief closing comments?
I better say yes and go ahead and move along with it. Seriously, I want to thank everybody for, for being a good sport, coming up here and wearing our, our pink shirts tonight. I think a year ago, approximately, we were up here with some pink latex gloves on. And, and I really like the shirts a lot better. It's a little more manlier than the, the pink gloves. But it's, we have quite a few good causes that are out there. And so anytime that we can help participate, I really think that City Prattville has actually stepped forward over the years and hopefully we can continue to do that. I want to remind everybody again about the candy walk on the 28th, the movie that we've been able to put together at approximately no cost to our citizens there. And also remember October the 18th, about keeping District 88 intact. And I think that is something that we really need to, everybody who, who lives in the city of Prattville really needs to consider that, because how important that that could be. And, and I do appreciate the hard work that the council has done also. And we've, again, we all have been through quite a bit. And thank you for, for, for doing the services that you guys do.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Stripland? Councilman Wood? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First of all, I would like to address some of the comments that Mayor Gillespie made about House District 88. The Alabama Legislature typically does reapportionment in their first year of their quadrennium, right after the census has been approved. The legislature this year chose not to do legislative districts. They did congressional districts and state Board of Education districts, but did not do their own. So they're holding a series of 21 meetings over the next 20 days where they're asking for public input into their plan so that when they get into session in February, they would then reapportion the legislative districts. There is a move to divide House District 88. I am totally opposed to that. I hope that every other citizen of the city of Prattville is opposed to that. It is not in our best interest. Our, our influence in the legislature will be diminished greatly. And I certainly encourage, as, as the mayor has done, every Prattvillian, every Otoga Countyan, even those who live in the Elmore County portion of Prattville, to come out and speak at that hearing. It is not being done to help us. It is being done to diminish our authority and our influence and our ability to govern ourselves. So please do not take that lightly. That, that is, that's serious as far as the city of Prattville goes. Second thing I want to make a comment to Mr. Hawthorne, but I see he's already departed after he made his comments, and Mr. Brand. This council does not approve liquor licenses. We don't issue liquor licenses. What we do is we pass a resolution that gives some guidance to the ABC Board. So the mere fact that we approve a license does not guarantee that a business is gonna get it. And the fact that we deny it is not gonna mean that they're not going to get it. So all we're doing is we're merely taking a sense of this community, of how we feel about a particular liquor license. And certainly, our rules, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that, that explanation that you gave, Mr. Hawthorne, because it was absolutely right on target. This council, and I know everyone hates to hear me say this, but it's absolutely true, we do make mistakes. And when a mistake is made, we have the right to correct that, that statement. Now, Mr. Wood made a statement about us changing heart. I have not spoken to a single soul on this council about how I was going to vote on that liquor license. It was not my intention to try to change anyone's mind. I made a mistake in my vote, and I wanted to change it. And this council gave me that opportunity. And obviously, other members of this council felt that they had made an error, and they corrected their mistake. That is what our rules are for. So I take offense when someone tells me I don't have a right to change my vote or to make a mistake. And also, if we took Mr. Brand and Mr. Hawthorne's position, once we pass a budget, we just have to live with it from then on because we can't, can't change it. Because there are business people who went out and made business decisions based on our budget. The fact of the matter is, what we do is fluid. Everything we do up here is fluid. And we can change it from week to week or meeting to meeting. So I appreciate the council giving me that opportunity, and I appreciate the council voting tonight to reconsider that resolution. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I guess this is follow-up for Councilman Wood. I was able to pull up the minutes from our meeting, and it was a seven-zero vote. And I don't have anything else.
Councilman Bowles?
I would like to reiterate on the council, on the District 88 position. Not only would I advise y'all to be there the day that we can speak about it, but get on the phone and start calling everybody. It's amazing how people, politicians as ourselves, will change their mind when you get the phone calls flooding in. Senator Taylor is a major key to this thing. Call him and call him over and often. Senator Beckman is a key to it, but also the governor's office. I'd ask y'all to call the governor's office and everybody that can be, be there the, the day that the public can talk about it. And let's make sure we stop this from happening. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Who said that? Mayor?
If you would indulge me one moment, and if you could direct everybody to the city website who's interested...
20 seconds.
Who's interested in, in this issue that we have before us on District 88. There will be some information on the city website. And thank you again.
All right. Mr. Beckman is our state representative, not our state senator. Councilman Bowles? That had to be corrected. Senator Taylor might take a question to that. That being said, our next city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October the 18th, 2011, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.